Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Today's meeting of the South West Local Area Committee is a public meeting. Warm welcome to all of you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is councillor Andrew Sanger and I'm the chair of this area committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over this committee clerk to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The toilet facilities are situated just through the main doors and in the entrance way. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I please ask that members and officers around the table introduce themselves? So, do you want to sort of... Colin?
Pardini, I'm councillor Colin Ross. I'm a ward member for Doran Totley Ward.
Thank you. I'm councillor Javonson, councillor Doran Totley.
Reeve Nelson, councillor for Crooks and Crosspool.
Minaj Parrot, councillor for Crooks and Crosspool.
Good day, Lucy. I'm also councillor for Ecclesall. I do apologise, I'm using this rather than loops.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Forward.
Sue Austin, the third councillor for Forward.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall.
Shephard Nahamid, Ecclesall.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I'd like to explain how tonight will work. We've got some formal business to deal with in terms of apologies, declarations and minutes of the last meetings. And then we would like to invite our special guest, Police and Crime Commissioner Dr Alan Billings, to speak for a few minutes. And then we're going to break out onto the tables into groups to discuss the theme of community safety. At previous meetings, people have been concerned that we don't break out quick enough and we spend too long doing our formal business. So we're going to do the breakout session for about an hour. We are in the process of refreshing our community plan that we agreed 18 months ago or so. We know that community safety, how the police work, how they respond to crime, how we tackle antisocial behaviour in our communities will remain an issue in the new community plan. So this is an opportunity for us to get your ideas on paper and to talk in small groups. As I say, we will then, as councillors, come back here and we will then deal with the public questions that we received for the final half hour of the meeting. So we've got answers prepared and, as I say, we'll do the usual thing. Half an hour, we'll go through those questions and then if there is time, we'll take verbal questions. I think Dr Billings is probably wanting to have a few short questions after he's spoken before we break into groups. So I think that's what we'll do, just so we get you thinking about things. Okay, I've said enough. Let's press on. Apologies for absence. Had apologies from councillor Tim Hudden and councillor Martin Smith. And can I give the apologies of our lack manager, Tanya Bustamante, who's unwell and has to give her apologies tonight. Okay, this is a public meeting, so it's all open to the public and pressed. We're not excluding any items. Item four, declarations of interest. Have any councillors got any declaration of interest? No? Okay. Item five, minutes of the meeting. So we've got meetings of the 23rd of March and then the much shorter meeting we had on the 17th of May.
What's 23rd of March?
23rd of March. Has anybody got any items?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just that on page 12, there's a mistake in the second paragraph. The officers are not monitoring accidents. What they're doing is monitoring traffic levels on the arterial roads, which is Ecclesall Road South. And I believe they're monitoring Abbey Del Road, sections of Abbey Del Road as well and Archer, sorry, Abbey Road. I've forgotten which three they're doing. But basically, it's monitoring displacement on Ecclesall Road South is the key thing and the feeder roads into it, which is Abbey Lane and Abbey Del Road itself, Abbey Del Road South especially.
Okay, can we note that change? Okay, has anybody else got any points of clarification or matters arising? Can we agree the minutes for the 23rd of March?
Agreed.
And can we agree the minutes for the 17th of May?
Agreed.
Right, thank you very much, colleagues. Right. Right, I would like to now invite Dr Alan Billings up to the table. Colleagues, do you want to go down to the groups now? So Alan sits here and then we can then go into the groups very quickly once Alan's finished speaking. There's a roving mic there if you would rather use a roving mic. Would you rather use that or would you rather use... Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. And never seen so many councillors all in one place before, so that's something new for me. And thank you to the police who have come. I hope they're here regular at your lack meetings, Phil and Pam and Sergeant at the back, Rob. Good to have you all here. Just very briefly, I thought I might say a very quick word about what I do as Police and Crime Commissioner, because it's often misunderstood, the role. And something about, I'm getting an echo, I don't know whether it's, you're having the same trouble. And something about the document that you've got in front of you. And then I thought it might be that people wanted to ask some questions about that. So very briefly, Police and Crime Commissioner, what do I do? It's an elected post. This is my third term of office and my last, so I shall not be standing again. And by the time I get to the end of my term, which is next May, I should have done 10 years in the job. So I think it's time for a change there. The first thing that the PCC does, if there is a vacancy, is you appoint the chief constable. So in my time, I've appointed two chief constables. Both have been very significant appointments for South Yorkshire. One, Stephen Watson, a number of years ago now, was when the police were in a really bad place in South Yorkshire. We'd had real difficulties around child sexual exploitation in Rotherham, you may recall it, the J report. 1,400 girls who had been sexually abused, groomed, abused, trafficked by people in the grooming gangs of the Rotherham area. And the police were accused of turning a blind eye to that, along with officials of Rotherham Borough Council. Then we had the Hillsborough Inquests, which had things to say about the role of the police at the time of the Sheffield Wednesday Football Disaster, when 96 fans were crushed and killed in that disaster. So morale was very low in the force and public trust and confidence had ebbed away in South Yorkshire. Bad place to be. So I appointed a new chief constable, Stephen Watson, and told him he got to turn the force around. He said he'd need five years to do that. So I gave him a five-year contract. And he brought the force from, in the opinion of Her Majesty's inspectors, from requiring improvement to good in a five-year period and outstanding in terms of their ethical leadership. Now, when you think of where they were five years prior to that and where they came to, that was a very remarkable journey that they were on. He left then to do something similar, we hope, for Greater Manchester Police, who have also got themselves into real difficulties, got themselves into special measures, which is where we were in South Yorkshire. We were 43rd out of 43 police forces in 2016. So that's the journey we're on. Our most recent peer inspection by HMI says we're in the top half dozen of forces in the country. So the new chief constable, well, she's been there for two years now, Lauren Pultney, I appointed her a different job, equally challenging but not the same as Stephen's job, is to maintain that progress and to ensure that the force really is a modern force going into, you know, the next five, 10 years and able to do the things which forces have just got to do if they're going to stay ahead of the game, ahead of the criminal gangs, but also able with the resources they've got to continue policing. So that's a lot around IT and the skills around that. It's about a police force that is able to attract and retain people in a world where things like wellbeing in the workplace are very important to people. They've got to be able to do all these things. So her role is a different one and she has a five-year contract to do that. So I appoint a chief constable. I then have to produce this every year, which is the document that the police work to. I don't run the police, I don't give them operational orders, I can't tell them to do this or that. What I do do is set the priorities for the force and say to the chief constable, these are the priorities. This is what people have told me in South Yorkshire they want from their police. Now you go away and implement that. So she then produces her own workforce plans based on this and tells me how she will meet those priorities. So I've got three priorities for South Yorkshire Police and you'll see those on page 11, I think it is, the first one. I try to produce a very simple, as simple a document as I possibly can. So it's page 11, yes. Priority one, protecting vulnerable people. So you've got the priority stated there, protecting vulnerable people. And then the text that follows says, this in my view is, these are the vulnerable people that you need, that need protecting by you. And I try to set that out in the written text that follows the priority. And then, as I say, the chief constable then go and translate that into terms, into what the workforce will actually do. Now, that's a big priority. I only have three priorities and I've kept them the same all the time I've been PCC. Every police force area has a PCC who's producing one of these and they're all different. Mine is unusual in that it's very short, it's only got three priorities, partly because three is a battle I can hold in my head at any one time. But also I think that these umbrella terms cover most of what I want the police to do. And I also have little, as you can see, when it's protecting vulnerable people, I have some little dots then, which say areas of focus. I say within the text here about who the vulnerable people are, here are some particular vulnerabilities that I will pay a special attention to during the course of the year. And the rest of the year, having produced the plan and presented it, during the year, I then hold the force to account against these priorities and against these areas of focus. So today, for example, I had a meeting in the police force headquarters, where my office is down Meadow Way, just opposite Ikea there. We had a meeting of something I call the Public Accountability Board, when all the chief officers are in front of me and they produce reports for me based on this plan and these priorities. And they tell me what they're doing and I interrogate them on that and hold them to account publicly in that way. You can go on our website and see those, they're filmed and they're loaded up on the website. Or indeed, you can come, we had a member of the public, actually, there at the meeting today, they don't always come, and the broadcasters, the journalists either come or listen in as well. And then the rest of the time, during the course of the week, I'll have lots of informal meetings with the chief constable, senior command team, the district commander here for Sheffield and others on how they're implementing this particular plan. So that's the first priority, protecting vulnerable people. It's a big priority, that one, lots of things under it. It changes over time, the areas of focus change over time. A real interesting concern in the last couple of years have come women and girls, violence against women and girls, which has gone up to the agenda hugely since the dreadful abduction, rape and murder of Sarah Everard in London and others, other incidents. That's gone up our agenda there. But the vulnerable people can be, all of us can become vulnerable. I mean, anybody who's in here tonight who's got one of these, you're vulnerable or you can become vulnerable. If you've got a computer, you can become vulnerable. Forty percent of our crime is now online. Online, forty percent. And therefore, we're all vulnerable. So that's a big category. The second priority is tackling crime and antisocial behaviour on page 16. And again, different areas of focus that I've got on there, and they've changed over time. Cybercrime has popped up and gone up our list on there. Drugs has probably always been there. Top of that little areas of focus list are neighbourhood crimes, acquisitive crimes, burglary, car theft. They're shooting up. If I take the long view of crime, if I look over the 10 years, crime's fallen. During Covid and the pandemic, it actually fell off a cliff. No burglaries, no car thefts, were very little, because nobody wanted to be seen out on the streets, they were all supposed to be shut up in their homes. So patterns of crime change, but the broad picture is that crime has fallen. But within that, there are some upward movements and upward spikes, which I try to keep an eye on. Knife crime is one of those, serious violence in that way. But there's been a rise recently in burglaries, house burglaries and car thefts, and we need to think about that. If you drive a Ford Fiesta, as I do, you should be worried. If you drive a Land Rover, Range Rover, you should be worried, because they're the cars of choice that the criminals are actually seeking out at this moment in time. So tackling crime and antisocial behaviour and cybercrime, as I've already said, is probably the one that's really coming to the fore. I mean, all these things have implications for the police force and what kind of skills you need your police force to have. When I go to lots of community meetings, people say to me, we just want more bobbies on the beat, more bobbies on the beat. We want to see police on the beat. I understand that, I get that. Visibility is important and we want to see our police. But all the bobbies on the beat in the world are not going to solve crimes that are committed online. We have to have people who are behind a computer, who are IT literate, highly skilled in being able to interrogate the computer and have those abilities and skills to do that if we're going to solve that crime. And that's the movement. So the workforce has got to reflect that. If all our police are being trained just to be, I say just to be, because it's an important role in itself, to be neighbourhood police, as our cops here are tonight, that may not be solving your cybercrime. So we've got to think about the workforce all the time, the implications of these priorities. And the final priority I've got is treating people fairly. And that's an interesting one, that's page 20. Treating people fairly means, again, different things. I, as you appreciate, I'm the PCC for the whole of South Yorkshire. So the last community meeting I was at, at the end of last week, was in a little village called Tretin, just between Sheffield and Rotherham. Over 100 people were in the room and they'd had a spike of burglaries in their village. Now, the number of people in the community there is about just under 4,000 people. And some burglaries, which in our area here, we probably wouldn't even notice beyond the streets where they were happening. In a village, everybody knows, everybody's affected, everybody feels threatened, frightened and very angry as to, you know, what were the police doing about it, what are they going to do about it? And what they said to me was, the reason that we don't see police in Tretin is because they're all in Forward and they're all in Crooks and they're all in Crosspool. The big city sucks them all in. All the resources are here and they're not in the rural areas. So I have to say to them, one of my priorities is treating people fairly. You must have your fair share of the resources as well. Or I go to a community where there are many ethnic minority groups and they say something similar to me, we don't see the activity in our area. And again, I have to say, well, I'm saying to the chief constable, we have to be fair in the way our resources operate. I mean, there are some communities that tell me, we see too many police and we want, we're not going to get off our backs, but that's another story. So different priorities, three priorities. And the rest of the year, as I say, I'm holding the force to account against those priorities. I also have a little section on here about value for money. Very hard on the police about value for money, we have to be, because money is tight and it's getting tighter. And I have to say to the police, you simply have to do more, you have to do it more efficiently and you're probably going to have to do it in the future with less resource, financial resource, and certainly not with more financial resources. So we spend quite a bit of time looking at the budget. I'm responsible for all the money. All the money comes to me, all government grants come to me, all the pre-set money in council tax comes to me and then I set the budget for the force and I hold them to account over that as well as the year goes on. So that's what I do. Just one last thing, because I noticed safety, community safety is one of your concerns tonight. One of the things that's gone up on our list of priorities is community safety, speeding. Speeding. And all that happened during lockdown, during Covid. Community meetings I went to pre-Covid, nobody was that interested in speeding. Since Covid, it's gone right up the list. Everybody seems to be now aware of traffic in their areas and the speed that vehicles are doing. And of course, we've had this great growth of demand for 20 mile an hour areas in towns and cities and it's all across South Yorkshire, indeed, it's all across the country. That's been an interesting thing. I asked the cops why they thought that had happened and we're not absolutely sure. We think it's possibly to do with the fact that when people were locked down and at home, they simply became more aware of that wider environment and what was going up and down the road outside. We also know that those people who were in work and going to work tended to put their foot down and go a bit faster during that period. So for a variety of reasons, speeding has gone up on our list of concerns. I'll stop there, Chair. Okay, thank you all very much. Can we all thank Dr Billings? Right, has anybody got any quick verbal questions they would like to give to the PCC? Any quick questions?
Hello, Dr Billings. I wrote to you, actually emailed a few years ago, asking if you could do something for me and you did. So thanks for that. You have no idea what it was, but it was good. But my question then is, you talked about neighbourhood crimes being a target. Looking at the figures from the South Yorkshire Police website, I can zoom in on the area in which I live, I noticed that over half, well over half the crimes remain unsolved. Can you just briefly say why that's so high?
There's lots of reasons, I think. Well, A, there's a shortage of detectives. This is a real issue for us. It's a national issue, it's also a local issue. And we struggle to get detectives and civilian investigators of crimes. Clearly, the people who are going to do the work on investigating crimes are going to be the detectives. So that's a worry for us and a problem for us. Trying to address that, trying to attract people into the role of a detective, I always find this a bit of a mystery. On the odd occasion when I'm not coming to meetings like this and watching television and seeing things on television, it's detective series that I watch, but nobody wants to be a detective. That I don't understand. I find this odd too, because when I used to work in a university and I said to the Vice Chancellor once, how do you plan the courses for the next five years when you don't know what people are going to be applying for? He said, I watch television. If it's about vets, I know that there's going to be a surge in people applying to be vets and so it goes on. But why not detectives? We don't get that. Secondly, they're getting, people are getting very cunning and very crafty. As I came here, I was just looking at a number of CCTV cameras on houses. Well, we know that those who are going to burglar houses, they understand that very well. They put a baseball cap on, pull it down over their eyes, they're all in black, they've probably got a balaclava on by the time they break in. They know all these things. So if you've got a series of CCTV pictures that just show someone with a black baseball cap with a balaclava, dressed in black, very hard to detect that. So it's very hard to do it. And if you've got no witnesses and nothing in the street. So the detectives have to get cania and see, you know, look at more remote CCTV, what vehicles have come into the area, at what time of day, is there a pattern that they can see? I think sometimes they catch the people but they don't necessarily, they aren't necessarily able to tie them to all the crimes that they've committed. So that may be a bit of comfort. Sometimes they get a prolific offender and we notice things go down in an area that they may not admit to everything that they've done. So a variety of reasons, I think. Okay, there's a question at the back.
Okay, so your brochure makes quite a bit of play about the reintroduction of neighbourhood policing teams. And I'd like to ask you, I come from Crooks, so do we have a neighbourhood policing team in Crooks? And more widely, could I ask you where the neighbourhood policing teams are based in the South West Sheffield local area? Where are they and how are they to be contacted?
Yes, we do have neighbourhood policing teams across the whole of South Yorkshire now. If you go back five, if you go back six years, they didn't exist because we were facing a financial crisis. The years of austerity saw neighbourhood police teams across the country decimated. So we only had response teams, they're uniformed officers, they're answering calls for service incidents, 999 calls, calls out for service. And the neighbourhood teams were wound up. Now, the senior officers at the time said, well, we'll turn the response teams into, there'll be neighbourhood teams as well. I mean, the definition of a neighbourhood team is a team that's geographically fixed, it works a patch, an area, geographical area. And they said our response officers can have a bit of geography as well. It didn't work, it didn't happen. So we were reduced to response teams. And when Stephen Watson, towards the end of his time, we had a meeting, I remember it very well, and we said, we cannot carry on like this, we've got to restore neighbourhood teams. They're the bedrock really, or should be, of a police force. They're the people who know an area, know a patch, know the criminals in it, know their methods of operating, know the people of the area, know the businesses and all the rest of it. We've got to put them back. So we started to use council tax, pre-set money to increase officer numbers in order to restore neighbourhood teams, very thin at first. And we're now restoring neighbourhood teams, they're all in place now. You've got some here tonight who can probably tell you which, where they're coming out or... If you say, where are they? I hope they don't say in, you know, Woodseats Police Station or Ecclesfield or Snigga or whatever. I hope they say to you, well, we're actually on the patch, we're out there, because that's what we want. Yes, they go to a police station to start their shift and their duty, but then they're out in the community and their office is with them. They don't have to go back to tap on a typewriter, which once upon a time they had to do to do their reports. They've got their laptops in the car, they've got their mobile phones and they work in the community. You may sometimes see them in a cafe or in a library or a place like this, church, whatever, doing some of that, you know, some of that work. So that's what they are. Now, here, you're, I think you said you go out to, was it Forward and Rammore? So we've got a number of neighbourhood teams potentially. I don't know whether the cops who are here can tell me who's in the lack area, which teams, but Phil or Rob or... Yeah, so, sorry, Phil, can you get Phil the microphone?
Right, in answer to the question then, the North West team covers from Broom Hall out to Stockbridge. And although the North West team is one team, it's then divided into three teams. So we've got the Broom Hall team, which covers Broom Hall, Crooks, Rammore, Forward Lodge more... More, got a Walkley team that covers Walkley, Locksley, Hillsborough, and then the Deep Car team cover Locksley out to Flowerton and Bell. Geographically, it's quite a large area. Geographically, it's quite a large area, but it's split down into three smaller teams.
I mean, just to say from a lack perspective, the lacks were re-set up, as it were, on, you know, collection of four wards, and by that stage, the police had already gone for a different structure. So it is a challenge, because as a lack, we're always working for these two, these two police teams, the North West and the South West. But I mean, I know the, I know the two teams do work closely, but it's one of those challenges. So very much Forward and Crooks work with the North West team, and Doran Topley and Ecosso with the South West. It's one of those things. I don't think we're going to go back to where we were 15 years ago, where we had contiguous boundaries, it's a challenge. All I would say is, when I was first elected to councillor, we had 19 different ways of dividing the city. If we've only got four or five, that's a bit, and that is an improvement, but clearly there are police, different police priorities across South Yorkshire. So it's not been possible to create neighbourhood teams on more boundaries. I'm going to take, I know there's three questions, how many more questions do you want to do before we go to tables? I'm keen to go to the table working quickly, but I know I've got three gentlemen, they've got those two, they're all in blue, the two gentlemen are in dark blue and then the gentleman in white.
Thank you. Andrew Manasson. It's a quick question really, it's just, I was there when you were first appointed and was very happy that you were, and I wondered how your 10 years has been, and in particular, do you feel supported and is your role important enough to be, do you feel it's a secure, an important role and it's going to go on? How is it for you?
Well, when I was appointed, I represent the Labour Party, though when you become a PCC, you take an oath, you swear an oath to, without fear or favour, serve all the people of South Yorkshire, and I've always tried to do that. I was elected on a very strange ticket, because the Labour Party didn't support PCCs when they first came in. So I had to say, vote for me, I want to be abolished. And that was not a good message to convey to the electorate. I think the PCCs are part of their role. We are directly connected to the, people know who we are, they take trouble to, they can find out who we are. Single person who, it says on things like this, I hear what people say and I can go, as I will do, to the Chief Constable on Monday, I meet her every single Monday, and we just run through some of the things that have come up for me during the course of the previous week. Now, that's a real strength, I think. And the holding to account thing, I think, has been so important in South Yorkshire. The police got themselves into a bad place 10 years ago, and it was essential that if they were going to get, move on from all that went wrong in Rotherham, child sexual exploitation, and the Hillsborough inquests, that they, they didn't go into denial around any of that, they admitted the areas that were made and they fessed up to that and moved forward and learnt the lessons from that. Listen to victims, listen to what the CSE victims are saying. One of the first things I did when I became Police and Crime Commissioner was to set up something called, I called it a Victims Panel for the victims of CSE. The first meeting, they said to me, we want it to be called the Victims Survivors and Their Families Panel. You've got to hear what our families have to say about all this as well. When I was groomed at the age of 12, I drove my parents round the bend, because they didn't know where that was at night, you must hear what their story is as well. And then I gradually introduced them to police officers and we gradually turned the force around. So the role is, can be a really crucial one in that way, a holding to account role, helping the police not to go into denial, helping them to get themselves into a better place. And another thing that I've done is, I set up an independent ethics panel in the days when there were no ethics panels, either within forces or certainly not independent ethics panel. And I had an independent chair of that, I've got the second independent chair at the moment. The second independent chair is the former head of King Edward's School, the previous one was a solicitor in Sheffield, both really good people, but quite independent of me, quite independent of the force. And they go in and they look at difficult ethical issues for me and for the force, and it's taken a while for the force to accept them and to realise there's benefit for them in having an independent ethics panel. They look at things like stop and search, use of force, and they have to, they have to listen very carefully and take some really hard things that those panels will say to them about their use of force, their use of stop and search, but if you're going to make any progress. And I think that was, well, the HMI said, the reason that we're giving your force outstanding in terms of ethical leadership is in very large part because your independent ethics panel. Now, that's been copied in other parts of the country, they're not always independent, they sometimes, they call them ethics panels, but I think the value of them is that they're independent in that way. So I think the role has proved itself, and I'll be sorry when it's going next year here, it's going to be absorbed by the mayor. So my office disappears and it becomes part of mayor thing. I hope that...
Okay, thank you for that. So can we just have these two questions, can we have the two questions together and then, Dr. Billings, if you could give very short answers to these two questions?
Yeah, hopefully relatively short. First one is potentially about the misquotation on page 10 here. It says that the Operation Park Safe is, appears to be, duh 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 duh. Operation Park Safe has been a pilot in the South West area? Is that a mistype and supposed to be the North West area, or has Operation Park Safe come into place in the South West area?
So you're on page 10?
Page 10, at the bottom.
Not on the same document, is it?
My reason for asking that question is, as an avid anti-pants parker, I'm...
I can't find the reference, can you just look at the page number again?
Oh, okay, so, okay, continuing with the idea of Operation Park Safe, it says here the fact that it will be considered for further rollout. Yeah. Okay, regardless, is Operation Park Safe being extended across the county or across the Sheffield areas to be able to continue with something along the lines of 83% of cases being acted upon?
So I think to be fair, that's not on Dr. Billings' report, it's on our report. So the situation, and it is confusing getting the terminology right, so Inspector Kevin Smith is from the North West, but the pilot has been in wards like Crooks, Crossfall and Forward. So it has been very successful and he has, he has put the case to his senior officers that can it be extended. While he was waiting for that answer, he has won, he has been commended for awards in terms of how successful the scheme's been. From a political point of view, we're very keen that it is extended, but I think it comes back to, this is an operational matter for the police, how quickly it is extended. So we will be asking Dr. Billings to, you know, see if he can persuade people, but at the end of the day, it's a decision for the police command how quickly that is extended. So did you have another question?
Sorry, apologies, I misunderstood your...
Okay, and so very quickly, the last question then at the back.
Roger Hart from Sheffield Vulcan Rotary Club, representing neighbourhood watch S17 as well. We're a charity and they're not, so we decided we'd like to work with them and put an appeal in to the Police and Crime Commissioners' funding. Incidentally, I've just got the new round of funding coming through today. A very long questionnaire to fill in, but it was all orientated towards something directly tangible. And what we're looking at doing within our area is to put up more neighbourhood watch signs and no call-calling signs, which hopefully are preventative issues. But the questionnaire doesn't allow for that, and speaking to the assistant, it was apparent that what they were, what you were looking for was something like a physical activity or a building, something of that nature, but couldn't quite see the benefits of this preventative method.
And I take your point about the length of the questionnaire, I guess if we're covering all eventualities, it'd be even longer, the questionnaire, but I mean, I would say write to me, write to me directly and I'll deal with it that way, I think. Neighbour, you're a bit different from most of the people that apply to us for funding, so write to me directly.
To the, to your assistant, but it was rejected.
You were on the phone, were you? Were you on the phone to them?
Yes, I was on the phone to it.
No, write to me directly.
Just wait for the microphone.
This is Katie who works in my office, she may have better answers than mine.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that I'll take the chap's details at the end and help him out with that, because we're doing some work at the moment with neighbourhood watch, so I can help with that.
Okay, thank you. Can we, can we, can we thank Dr. Billings again? We're now going to move to the interactive breakout session, so we're going to do this from now until half past eight. Dr. Billings will circulate amongst the tables, the rest of the councillors will separate themselves and go on to one or, one councillor per table or two councillors per table, and we will listen to your views. There's a prompt sheet on the table, so I hope that goes well. So we'll come back and, we'll come back at half eight for the public questions. Okay, can we, we convene and we're back live on the webcast. So first of all, thank you for that session. Can you make sure that the notes are left on the table or that Darren or Mabarak have got them? Really useful contributions, it's really important that we capture everything, all the great suggestions you've come up with. Okay, we've received a number of questions in advance, and I would invite the questioners in the room to address the committee with their questions in turn, and then if we have any time and if anyone's got any other verbal questions, we'll deal with those. So the first one is from Mary Ann Love. Is she in the room? Yeah, so, so Mary, do you want, do you want me to read the question? Okay. So, "As King Edward's School will be expanding soon, there is a need for a rethink of the area's roads and paths before congestion builds up and causes accidents. The road outside the school is already becoming problematical due to the amount of cars and buses trying to deliver or pick up children to and from school. Also, the amount of parked cars at these times adds to the congestion and potential accidents. The path along Totley Brook Road, which serves parents and their children who attend primary schools, also needs attention as it is overgrown. And Sheffield City Council are not attending to the upkeep of this area, even though I've requested this for safety reasons. The land does belong to SCC, so surely it's their responsibility to ensure that it's kept in good condition." My question is, when are SCC going to start proceedings to restructure this area with pedestrians and safety in mind? Our councillor Ross?
Yes, I had discussions with the head of King Edward's, and actually, one thing we did a number of years ago, there wasn't a footpath on the opposite side of the school at all. So we actually used some, it was community assembly funding at that time, to actually put in the footpath. So it meant that people who were going to the primary school, for example, or were just walking to the village, could use the footpath away from where lots of children and the buses were congregating. So that was one step, we invested quite a lot of money into solving that problem. The head is aware of the problem and is looking at actually enhancing some of the walk-to-school routes, say up to Totley, you know, going through, down and across and up to Maston Crescent, those footpaths, see if we can get some additional funding connected with the new build of the school, the expansion of the school, to enhance those footpaths. The parking outside the school increases during the year as actually the upper six pass their tests and then start bringing courses to the school. September is not very much at all, and then it increases during the year, so there will be a drop-off in September that will come there. But I have been talking to the head about this, and as I say, we invested quite a lot of money a few years ago to put in the additional footpath."
This is one of the reasons I wrote in about this situation, because the path wasn't being looked after and the undergrowth was growing over the path and stopping people from actually walking along it. So they were still having to cross the road and creating this problem with...
Thanks for alerting us to that.
Well, as it's turned out, a young man called, sorry, a young man called Darren Green got in touch with me, because, you know, I've been, whereabouts? And he, he has organised it so that the bushes and...
They're going to be cut back.
Have been, have been cut back, so it's actually passable now and people are quite able to use the path.
So your question has resulted in action. Thank you.
It has, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Okay, the next, the next question is from Michael Buckston. Would Michael like to come to the microphone and ask his question? Is Michael here? Michael Buckston? No, Michael Buckston, that's not Michael Buckston. Buckston, Buckston, sorry, Mike. Okay, so we make sure that Michael gets his answer in writing, I mean, all these answers will be in a minute, but we make sure that Michael gets his answer in writing. Okay, is Lydia Monks here? Hi.
Hello, I wanted to ask you all about, well, when we were here in January, it was announced that there were going to be more parking regulations brought into Brookhouse Hill at the entrance to Forge Dam Park, but seven months later, there's still no sign of anything. So I just wondered what the update was. I last heard you were short-staffed, so there was nothing happening, but we just want a bit of reassurance that it is still going to happen at some point, although we'll miss this summer's busy season again.
Okay, count forward perhaps? Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I'm really disappointed that this hasn't happened yet. The scheme has been designed, it's due to go out for consultation by means of getting a TRO, traffic regulation order, which is what has to happen for these things. The scheme is going to prohibit any parking on that road except in marked parking bays, which is the preferred way of dealing with this. They have, the reason that it's been delayed is partly because of staff shortages, partly because they've moved to a new computer system for doing traffic regulation orders. And I can only apologise, this is hugely frustrating for me, because it would have been nice to have seen it happen, even more frustrating for yourselves. As I say, I can only apologise. Okay, thank you. Paul May.
Hi. So my question relates to priority 1.2, cycling and active travel. There's three sections. What are the evaluations of the trial school streets schemes in Crooks, Bradway and the Dogcroft Schools? Secondly, have you compiled a list of existing school streets schemes, and if so, what is it? And thirdly, have you moved to identify all schools that would benefit from a school streets scheme? Thank you.
Shall I, shall I take this one? So clearly, that's covering quite a wide part of the South West. So Westways, as our Crooks and Crossfall colleagues know, it's been reviewed as part of the larger active travel neighbourhood scheme. Initial feedback is that scheme on Mona Avenue works well when the school are able to enforce it. However, the school do not have the staff capacity to marshal the Warwick Road closure as well. The school have had no volunteers come forward from parents or residents despite the wide level of support. So I don't, we'll come back to whether colleagues want to add to that. The Bradway scheme has received no objections and feedback from school has been positive. Dogcroft doesn't have a school street. Dogcroft doesn't have a school street. After the trial last, some other school were keen to look at alternative solutions to their parking issues. As such, the council have installed five bollards to protect dropped crossing points and deter parking in the junction corners. Do you want to? Yes. So I'll get to the end of the officer response. The list of existing school street schemes is available on the internet. And so very briefly, so Abbeyfield have got a trial, Anne's Grove is permanent, Applestone is a trial, Bradway is a trial, Byron Wood is permanent, Carfield is permanent, Hunter's Bar is permanent, Greystones is permanent, Never Edge is permanent, Philmore is a trial, Portcraft is permanent and Westways is a trial. The current council policy for assessing and implementing schools for school streets scheme demands that schools be mode shift stars accredited, which is a national accreditation for schools to know road safety and active travel. Involvement in the scheme means the school has done the following basic travel survey, carried out some active travel road safety initiatives, established a working group within the school and showed a commitment to encourage active travel. Once accredited, the council assesses each location against a set criteria, which includes air quality, type and suitability of roads, severity of problem, number of residents and businesses affected. High school and schools give proof of feasibility and development. We've assessed all the accredited schools. So that's where we are. I don't need to call, first of all, do we, Minesh want to say something?
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to make one other comment about this, which is that it's great that we've now got this latest. I mean, it's still not very many, is it? Schools that have trials or permanent fixtures. And obviously, we want to see it expanded a lot more. We want every school to have the opportunity to enter into the scheme. But I have a concern that we only have one officer working specifically on school streets for the whole city. And so that puts an obvious limit on what we can do and how fast we can move with the rollout of them. So that's a question that I'd like to put on the record through this local area committee, is how can we expand that capacity? And it's going to need more than one officer, isn't it?
I have some good news for you, councillor Milson. At the last meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, we did commit the council to employ a second person. And so whether that will improve that list from 10 to 140 is more of a challenge. But transport do know and capacity in transport highways is clearly a big challenge for the council. So, okay, so.
Can I then put to the record here the fact that with respect to the Dogcroft Schools one, and I quote Catherine Harrison's email of the 4th of July, "As far as the school street programme goes, nothing has changed in how the council can implement and enforce these schemes. The onus is on the school to marshal the closure points. And as both schools are unable to commit to this element, a school street will not be happening at the Dogcroft location." I appreciate that schools are seeming to provide some form of resource to it. But if the council aren't willing or able potentially or to push them to do so. I've been told by Mike this evening that as part of his neighbourhood group, he has provided the schools with opportunity for volunteers who have come forward for that to help with that. Secondly, there is residential support for a scheme of some sort to be put in place. And I, as you will all know, because I've been here pretty much a year now, banging on about the same thing. The lack of progress and lack of engagement and lack of, I think, as councillor Milson pointed out, that the resources into such a huge scheme that is county, citywide, to have one person trying to tackle everyone is, I mean, like trying to throw a snowball at a flaming fire. It needs much more push from the council. It needs much more engagement from the council with residents and parents and actually to put real, I would say, pressure on schools to sort this out. Because not only is it in your interest as part of your climate programme massively, but it will help with your transport, active transport programme and your fitness programmes and your healthy eating programmes and everything else. It all links in with it. So I would like to, you know, further request if you can get somebody else on it, get five people on it.
Okay, your point has been noted. Okay, thank you for that. Next question is from Viv Lockwood.
Thank you. Chair, we spoke earlier and you said that the information had been asking for is on its way to me. So I won't ask that question. But I will ask the other one, and this is my way of asking for support from members, that at the moment, the report on the Never Edge Active Neighbourhood Scheme is being written and will be presented to the committee in due course. We asked for and received the promise from the senior officer, Tom Pinigan Smith, that there would be sufficient time between the report being published and it going to committee for it to be available to the public for inspection and interrogation. Our experience has been that very often data put out by the transport department needs close examination. I understand that it may actually be just possibly even just one week. I'm really asking for your support and your intervention on this, that you might be able to get that extended. A month was suggested initially, but I'm hoping that at least a fortnight would elapse for the public to be able to look at it.
Thank you very much for the question. Clearly, the council has a legal duty to make sure that there's a clear week before, from papers going out to committees, meeting and taking decisions. And that is, you know, that is a commitment the council will stick to. I will take your question back. I mean, it so happens we have a work plan meeting. So I will raise the issue with my colleagues, councillor Ben Riscall and councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubo, about where we are with those reports and when they're coming to Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. Clearly, we have that report and as we just heard, the Crooks Walkley Active Travel Neighbourhood Report and the Ecclesdale Bus Priority Report and the Abidale Bus Priority Report. I think the point you make, sir, is equally relevant to those five reports about how we go from a trial period and consultation to a report and decisions. And I think you're saying that a week is not sufficient. I will raise it with my colleagues and I will get and I'll mention it to Tom Pinigan Smith, who's clearly very aware of your question. And I, we will be, you know, we will take notice of what you have said and your request. Okay, the next question is from Mike Hodson.
Thank you. Right. I have to give an apology to this. My question was a very long question. And it cited a number of examples of some of the things I was asking about and asking the lack to comment on. Unfortunately, the long question was not printed in the agenda. So the audience, people attending here, will probably not know what the heck it's about. So I'll have to give a little bit of brief introduction. This is about a lease that Parks and Countryside Service and Property Service are proposing to lease land from Millhouses Park to the Wagon and Horses pub, which is owned by True North Brew Co. This proposal arose in 2017 and Parks and Countryside Service decided to go ahead with the lease in, I think it was March 2021. Friends of Millhouses Park have been pressing Parks Countryside Service to keep them updated, as they promised to do, about the progress of the lease and about what was going to be in the lease, including things like how much rent is involved because that rent was promised to be ring fenced for the park for two or three years, the length of the lease and so on. Some of these details were in my long questions, though. But Parks and Countryside Service took 18 months from the time when the Wagon and Horses actually took control of this piece of land under a licence, the lease not having yet been signed. They took 18 months to get back to Friends of Millhouses Park and say what was happening. Now, that, I think, is appalling. And questions to Parks Countryside Service as to why this is the case and where were the updates have been met with vagueness and stonewalling. And some details, they are refusing to release on the grounds that they are commercially sensitive. I'll come back to that a bit later on. So what I'm asking first of all is, is the LAC concerned about the failure of the Parks Countryside Service to inform and consult and deal fairly with the Friends of Millhouses Park? And that involves also abiding by the requirements of the Building Better Parks policy under which this lease is being made. That was a policy, I think, implemented by the council in 2018. Has some quite stringent requirements for consultation, information and so on. And we think that policy requirements are not being adhered to. The second part of the question is, is the LAC satisfied that the proposed lease provides value for money for the council and for the community? Because True North Brewery, so I kept getting that the wrong way around, have had 18 months occupation of that land and commercial exploitation of that land without paying a penny in rent. And they still, even though the lease is, well, it hasn't been agreed because it's still got to go to the finance committee to approve it, and that's not going to happen now till August. They will then have had two years and two, three months, I think, use of that land free of rent. Despite the fact that in the original consultation, it was promised that True North Brewery were actually investing in the park. It seems to me it's actually the other way around. The pub's investing in True North Brewery. Right, third question is, how does the LAC reconcile the pressure to support this local business, which is one of the reasons that we're being told they're getting the lease, with the apparent failures to meet the requirements of council policies? Because on the one hand, you've got the Building Better Parks policy that requires information, consultation and certain criteria for this lease to go ahead. On the other hand, they're not happening. And the reason being given is, well, we need to support this local business. So is there a way of reconciling that and how does the LAC suggest we might do it? Can I just add a fourth question very briefly? Commercial sensitivity has been cited as the reason for the reduction, reduction of many of these details. And such is the amount of the annual rent. Does the LAC agree that the requirements of commercial sensitivity should be balanced against the rights of the community to have such details so the community can evaluate value for money? And also, this is public land and this is public money. And the public should be able to know what they are.
Thank you for those questions and we will get answers in writing. Clearly, some of these matters are heading towards Finance Committee on 1st of August, as you have said. As a lack, we don't have the level of finance or legal support from council officers to make comments about whether items should be in the public domain and the level of commercial confidentiality. But I note the question, as I say, we will get your full writing. Councillor Masters, do you want to reply to any parts of Mr. Wilson's questions?
Yeah, I mean, the pub has been operating under what's called a contract at will. You know, so that is with permission. And I know negotiations have been taking place because I've informed the, when members of the Friends of Millhouses Park contacted me, I've told them, I've been informed negotiations are ongoing, whatever negotiations are. But it's the same contract at will that the Rose Garden Cafe is operating under. So it's a bit unfair to say that there's no money involved. I don't know what the details are. But it is a recognised business arrangement while negotiations taking place. And really, I think, I suppose that's the main thing. When it came to Building Better Parks, a lot of those issues that you were concerned about were raised as part of the planning process, you know, and addressed in quite detail at that time as well. I know you're unsatisfied with the outcomes, but they are in the public domain. All the queries that you raised, all the answers that you raised, as well as the queries and answers that I raised at the time. And I'm, yeah, can't comment on sort of what the negotiations are. I don't know what they are. But there will be something to the Finance Committee and whatever is in the public domain will be made available. Is it a week beforehand, just like every other committee? So, yeah, we can't comment. But don't forget, we have been, we did consult with all the residents at the time. And it was a proper consultation, not what you originally complained about. And so just generally, sort of, I suppose opinions are mixed, but they're not negative because you yourself have recorded that there's sort of some very positive responses that you've received about it. So really, I mean, I'm not too sure if I can say anything because I can't answer your questions. I just wanted to clarify that sort of there have been these issues dealt with in the past and it is a contract at will, which is a business arrangement, not just that they've taken ownership and just operating as they see fit. No, yeah, I mean, that's all I can say, really.
Thank you, Chair. And I won't give a comment on the financial issue, but just to the question you asked to the lack, as a point of principle, it does feel like the relationship between the council and the Friends Group hasn't been what it should be. And I wonder if we as this committee should request the Finance Chair have a meeting with the Friends Group and just see if there are any questions that could be answered directly. I think the breakdown in communication does seem poor. And I think we should look for that to be addressed before the committee meeting. Would be my preference.
Happy to say that. So Mike, do you want to come back?
No, just to say that my understanding, according to Parks and Countryside Service, negotiations have been completed. The only reason why the lease is not producing any money is because it hasn't gone through the council procedure. I accept that. I mean, nobody's arguing about the way in which it was consulted about and whether it was popular or not. This is about how the council and Parks Countryside Service in particular has conducted itself in terms of keeping the Friends of Millhouses Park informed and consulted, which under the Building Better Parks policy, they are supposed to do. That's what the question is about. It's not about whether this is approved by the local community.
Into my understanding, didn't the parks manager go and see at least some members of Friends of Millhouses? Or have I got that wrong?
Sorry?
Didn't the parks manager go and at least give a verbal update to some members?
That was the first communication from Parks Countryside Service in 18 months. That came not via the head of service, but via the local parks manager, who was handed a piece of paper as he was on his way out of the office and said, can you give this to the Friends?
But can I just add that sort of, you know, questions were asked of me twice and twice I responded because I got a response. Admittedly, it was a very sort of, a response from Parks and Countryside to say that negotiations were taking place. But at least they were responding briefly to your concerns to say that they couldn't actually address your concerns because negotiations haven't been completed. So it's a very, and don't forget, there were other members of the group who were contacting me. But I think I can't add anything more to that.
I think we should draw that question to a close. We will get a written reply to Mike Hodson. We will take up the suggestion that councillor Minesh made to make sure that we engage with the Chair of Finance, but also the good offices of this lack in terms of bringing together people we need to be brought together, whether Friends of Millhouses Park, Parks Countryside officers and the other council offices as appropriate, before the paper goes live in mid-July, which is supposed to be quite soon. So yes, so we will take that on board. And as I say, all the questions we've had today will get written replies to. I think that brings us just about to one minute to nine. So I think I'm going to suggest we close the meeting. The next meeting is on, the next public meeting is on Thursday, the 28th of September. The venue is still to be determined, but our expectation is that it will be in the door in Totley Ward. And I look forward to seeing many of you there. So thank you very much for giving up your evening and safe journeys home. So thank you very much for giving up your evening and safe journeys home, and we'll be staying round at the end if you will need private words with us. So thank you, thank you very much for your attendance. Good night.